Comments while SPS TV takes us live after a brief pause, I will call this to order. All right, this is Director Wolf. I am now calling the board's special meeting to order at 3:30 PM on Tuesday, November 17th. For the record, I will begin calling role, beginning with Director Harris.
Present.
Thank you, Director Hershey.
Yo.
Thank you, Director Mack.
Hello.
Thank you, Director Rankin.
Here.
Wonderful, and Director Rivera Smith.
Present.
Thank you, and this is Director Duwolch. The superintendent is also present as well as staff who will be presenting as we move through today's agenda. This meeting is being held remotely consistent with the governor's proclamation prohibiting meetings such as this one from being held in person. The public is being provided remote access today by phone and through SPS TV by broadcast and streaming on YouTube. To facilitate this remote meeting, I will ask all participants to ensure you are muted when you are not speaking. There will not be a public comment opportunity today, and staff will be working to administer the meeting and maybe muting participants to address feedback and ensure we can hear from all directors and staff. And today's work session will be focused on the budget. So for now, I will hand it over to Chief Financial Officer Jillian Burge to begin the presentation. And I think we'll want us pause after slide six for questions.
Thank you, President Duwolch. Good afternoon, everyone. So for today's budget work session, we'll be updating you with final numbers for the 2021. We closed 1920. We have a little bit of a change for 2021 in a good way to report. And then we will be providing some more information regarding our 2122 projections and timeline. We will provide an update on the participatory budgeting process and where we're at so far. And then we'll be providing some initial information regarding areas of potential repurposing. So the next two slides, Linda Sebring, Director of Budget, can you take those away?
Yes, good afternoon. This is Linda Sebring, the Budget Director for the District. This is a slide we've provided to the board before and just wanted to draw attention to the 1920 column. And towards the bottom, it says unassigned 21,830,217 dollars. And on the next slide, this is the update where we made a change. So the areas that are highlighted, this slide reflects our anticipated revenue and expenditures for next school year. And what we are pulling forward is a larger chunk of that 21 million. Previously, this number was 21 million even. And we recognize that it has the 807,757 dollars available in it and a little bit more to reduce our gap to 48 million. So it's around number that we can all work towards at this time.
Thank you. If we can go back to slide three for just a moment, Director Hampson wanted me to make a clarification here just to provide some additional information. So on this slide, you see the transportation funding deficit of 11.6 million dollars. So that deficit amount, we project to happen under the following conditions. So if we go back to school in a hybrid model where we're transporting a small number of students, but not transporting all of the students, we think this is when we would have that deficit. So one of two things could change that number. If we did not return to a hybrid model, we would not be incurring a revenue loss for transportation in the same way. Or if the state legislature changed the rules for transportation funding for the rest of the year, and they allowed us to run the routes, but gave us the full amount of funding for those routes versus just for the ridership that would be occurring in a hybrid model. So I just wanted to provide clarification that right now we're estimating the 11.6 million dollars. It was something we hadn't budgeted for the 20, this current school year that we're in the 2021 school year. But that number could change depending on what else happens during the school year. So now we'll move on to slide five. So the purpose of this slide is just to give the board some ideas. These are examples that are provided for discussion purposes only. It's just, we were provided four large buckets of where to solve the gap from. So those four buckets are the economic stabilization or rainy day fund, which currently has 38.7 million dollars in it. The second area was to reduce district programs. The third area was to use capital funding. The fourth area was to reduce school funding allocations or some component of the WSS or the staffing allocations to school buildings. So what we've done is we've just provided some different scenarios and I'll walk through those with the board. This is really to try to start to generate ideas about where does the board want to go? Which of these options are you most interested in exploring? What other information can we provide to you that would help inform that decision? So option A is no reduction to school allocation allocations, and we would use all of the savings. So all of these could have all the numbers changed, but again, these are just for discussion purposes and to provide some examples. So using all of the rainy day fund, still needing to reduce both district programs and use some part of capital funding to get to a 48 million dollar number. Option B is spreading out and having reductions in all areas. So stabilization fund would have about half of it being reduced. There would be a slightly higher number in this scenario of reduction to district programs. Some more capital funding and would need to be used. And then we would also have to include some reductions to school funding allocations under this scenario. Option C would be no reduction to the economic stabilization or rainy day fund. So what would that really mean if we had to go other places and cover the entire 48 million dollars? You can see that there would likely be much larger reductions to either district programs or to the school funding allocations. And then option D is no reduction to the capital fund where we would not use any additional capital dollars. And so again, laid that out where we've balanced that really by increasing the reduction to district programs. And we would have a school allocation, school funding allocation reduction. So I just want to say all of these numbers can be changed. There could be another 10 options discussed by the board. These are just some options to get us started to have that discussion. Next slide, please. This is the budget development calendar. You'll see that we are on November 17th at the work session. We do have another work session on December 9th for more discussion from the board. You can see that on December 13th, if there are any recommendations, we would, if there are on December 13th, we would be bringing forward the board any recommendations from the WSS committee at that point in time for review and/or approval or change. And on January 6th, we would be looking to review those recommendations and then make sure that we understand what the overall budget changes and agreement on the budget that the, where the board wants to kind of go. We do have central budget development that does start in January. So at the latest, we really need some idea about what school funding allocations would be by the January 20th meeting from board directors. And then you can see that we continue to have work sessions where as long as we have some ideas about other numbers as far as district programs and things like that, we can work through some of those other numbers. But we're really working towards what are those allocations going to be? How much money are we going to spend? Are we going to have any reductions to the WSS or the school funding allocations to get staffing out to the schools by February? It's important to get staffing allocations out to schools in February so that they can work through their budget at their individual school level. And we're all working towards the timeline that is set in statute where we either have to give people contracts or we don't give them a contract for the next year. So with that, I'm happy to pause and take questions.
Okay, thank you, Chief Burge. We will begin alphabetical order with Director Harris.
I'm going to pass for now, but please loop me in the end. Thank you.
Will do. Thank you, Director Hershey.
Hey, thanks. Can we go back a couple of slides to the option slide, please?
Yep, slide five.
Yeah. Okay, so I have a couple of questions about reduction to school funding allocations. I could imagine if there's anybody from the community on the call, they're very, very nervous about these numbers. But what I, one question that I do have is concerning the amount of underspend that we have at our various buildings. And I'm just trying to see where, could you clarify for me, when a school has underspend, what part of our budgetary apparatus does that come from? Does it come from the like general fund or is it just kind of like a mesh? I'm just trying to understand kind of where, put together a mental trail for myself of where that money comes from.
Sure. So part of it would come from the school funding allocation line. So part of the school funding allocations are for supplies. So we give a base amount per, for each student for supplies of about 93 dollars or so. And then we also give some equity funding. We give about 7 million dollars of that out every year, and that is for free and reduced lunch students that you're serving. So I believe in 1920, Linda, jump in and help me, we had about 2 million dollars left out of those supply budgets and underspend.
If you go back two slides to slide three, you can see what is in the ending fund balance of carryforwards. So where it says school carryforward, 10 million dollars. So this is, as Chief Burge said, this is the non-staff money at the schools, the equity dollars at the schools, what is known as their self-help dollars. It does not include any grant underspends that also occurred.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And are, in terms of longitudinally, is this a pretty common number of carryforward?
It's a little larger at the end of 1920. As you see in 2021, we're forecasting it to be around the 9 million dollar mark. So that's closer to what we see. There is also what we call an advanced carryover that schools sometimes do. So this coming March, when they're building their budget, they may request to move money from this year into next school year. And that would not show up here.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay. Can we go back to the option slide for a moment, please? Thank you very much. So to me, what I'm looking at here is that, especially over option B, when we're talking about reductions across the board, the bulk of which coming from the economic stabilization fund, it seems as though with an annual carryforward amount of about 9 million dollars that we might not see as large of an impact from reductions to school funding allocations because we are already carrying an average of 9 million dollars forward. Would I be correct in assuming that or am I missing a part of that calculus?
Well, I guess I would offer these, I would offer these comments. That would be correct in math, right? But once you tell us, we tell the schools, which we should tell schools, we're not going to be doing, you know, if you have any carryover, you're going to lose the carryover. It usually changes their, how they behave, right? Their behavior changes once you know what your carryover limits are or aren't. So I would say this, I would think from my analysis over the last few years, I think that we probably have about 2 million dollars on average every year in supply budget underspend. And that's in total. So some schools spend all of their money and some schools don't spend, don't spend at all, right? But on average, there's probably about 2 million dollars in the supply budget that we have been carrying over year after year after year. That's not like a, you know, blip for COVID.
Yeah, and I would imagine that going, yeah. I mean, that makes sense. And I would imagine even going into next year with the, with our economy and the state that it's in, that that money would become even more important for some of our families who are looking to provide supplies for their kids and are struggling to make ends meet. Um, that's all I have.
Can I provide another piece of context?
Yes, please, 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 please.
So just another way to maybe get to the school funding allocation, just trying to generate ideas, right? We're, we try to generate ideas and bring them and let you guys talk about them. If we went to the contract limit for middle school and high school, which would be an increase of one, one student. So I think we're at like 28, seven to one, Linda, right now. We would go to 28 or 28 to 29. So it's a one student move in both high school and middle school. Middle school is worth about 5 million dollars a year. High school is worth about 5 million dollars a year for that one student class size increase. The other thing that I would say on that line item is if the legislature were to give us K3 relief and not have to meet the K3 threshold, we would be able to lift K3 class size up a little bit. And that would also provide another mechanism for a little bit more wiggle room. You know, right now, we're, we're getting all the dollars, which is certificated to student ratio 17 to one.
What's the, given the landscape of what you know, what do you think the likelihood of that is?
I think that we have better than a 50/50 shot at that. It doesn't really cost the legislature anything because they've already planned for it. And given COVID and the enrollment situation that's been caused by COVID, districts are going to have to come out and be pretty conservative on enrollment because you just don't know how many of your kids are coming back. And, and so if there's a little bit of room to maneuver in the K3 class size, it really gives a lot of flexibility.
Okay, okay. I guess the last question that I would have is, you know, given that these funding changes, depending on whether we go with, you know, a higher amount of students per class or have to make some really serious cuts in various departments. I am wondering where, where is educator voice and opinion captured in these decisions? Does that come through us as a board or are you, is there any way that we could work in collaboration with SEA with some of these options? It would just be really helpful for me in terms of making this decision because ultimately who this impacts is our teachers. And I want to really, I would love to see an opportunity to get some educator voice and opinion in this, if at all possible.
So the WSS work group has both principals and then it has the president and executive director of SEA serving on it. And their role in the past has been that they do provide input into what of these not great options would they prefer to see?
Yeah, okay, okay. I'll stop there for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hershey. And just for the record, Director Hampson joined this meeting at 3:46 PM. And with that, I'm going to actually just turn it over to Director Hampson. And Director Hampson, we have begun questions. Next is Director Mack. And at the end, Director Harris is asked to circle back to her.
Great. Hi, everyone. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Director Mack.
Hi, good afternoon. I think two questions. The, well, and likely a couple of comments. I might ramble a bit, forgive me. But in staying on this slide five here and looking at the options that are presented, our WSS is already razor thin and increasing class size is actually very concerning to me. Cutting the WSS any further, I, it's, I think that's, that will deeply impact worse. So if I look at these options, my preference would be for option A. But I have a question about the reductions to district programs and what, what programs are we talking about? What kind of reductions are we thinking of? What is the potential there for that 4.3 in the option A?
I have no idea yet. We'll talk about some areas for repurposing. These are just numbers that we threw up into just, just a ballpark. So I have no idea what those might be or what, you know, if those are great numbers to use or not. So they're just starting points.
But can you contextualize what district programs means on this spreadsheet? Because the, that can mean 5 million different things. Does this mean we would, you know, reduce the number of central office staff that are focusing on certain initiatives, reduce special ed funding, reduce the, I mean, what, what do we mean by district programs? What is that universe that this line is talking about?
Okay, so it's, it's really central office budgets falls under the major component of that. So a central office programming would fall under that. Maybe reductions to maintenance budgets, reductions to other initiatives that we currently have going in central office. It could mean reducing maybe what we do for our ELL program or a special ed program. Now, given those also have collective bargaining implications. And so, you know, you have to work around those and a lot of that is kind of tied down that you'd have to go back to the table on. So that's why, you know, reductions to district programs, it could mean transportation at, at certain schools or transportation for certain grades. Those would all fall under that line item.
Okay, thank you. I just would, I just kind of reiterate that what happens in the classroom and class size does matter. And having sufficient staffing in our buildings to support our students is of critical importance for each and every one of our students. And so I, I think protecting the school funding allocations is really important. So that's my comment to that.
Director Mack, can I give you one more document maybe to reference?
Sure.
So the flex view that we handed out that we've been attaching to this, it's really any of the line items above the last section that says schools. So any of the rest of that would really be considered. So all of these areas would be considered district programming. And so as you page through, page through, Leah, if you can keep going. So those are all areas. And then you get to this last page that says schools. That's really where the WSS lives, right? And so it would be anything above that line.
And, and in this, okay, so I appreciate that because that's a really large universe. And on page 25, you've got schools, but it also incorporated that, included in that is special education funding and ELL supports.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so that doesn't, that doesn't actually belong in that line that we were talking, because it's everything above that.
And you'll want to look at the first column that says flexible. So remember that this is called the flex view. Leah, can you go back to the beginning of this document right there? So it's really the first column under flexible that's able to be reduced, right? The rest of it's grant funded or we get dollars to do the activity or it's required by a contract or it's mandated by law. So I would just offer that perspective.
Okay, and then my last question is about whether or not the budget overall is accounting for the potential that the reopening of the buildings may need additional work to open in the fall if we are opening again. Has, has this current budget projection allocated additional costs associated with, you know, essentially some of the COVID-related costs that may be necessary to, for the next school year?
For the next school year? No, I don't have any costs for 2122 in that, in that specific way. We have PPE that we've been providing and we've kind of stocked up on some of that. We have some dollars set aside to cover some of those items. But I don't, if we're talking about other components to that, no, we don't have funding identified for that specifically. And I don't know exactly what else that might look like yet.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Director Mack. Director Rankin?
Thanks. I wanted to respond to or elaborate on something that Director Hershey said, which is about the supply, the supply funding. I, I guess to clarify or confirm, the supply money is an allocation. It doesn't necessarily mean that that's what schools spend it on. There's no restriction once it goes to the building. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So that could potentially actually mean staff.
It could be, typically it would mean hourly staff, but yes, it could.
Okay, depending on how the building chooses to use it. So I, I mean, I would say generally, this seems like the appropriate time to use an rainy day fund. It's very rainy. And can you talk a little bit about capital funding? And what, I mean, what the impact, so I feel like I understand the impact of what a reduction in school funding allocation would be on a, on a broad level. I know, you know, building to building, it would depend. But basically, if we go with option B, that's $95,000 a school about. So that's like about a staff person. The reduction statistic programs you have addressed. So capital funding is, I guess, what's the mechanism that allows for that? But also then, what would be the impact, like how would that, how would that come out of where, what capital projects, I guess?
Yeah. Well, if, if you don't mind holding that question, we're going to have a whole slide dedicated to that and just a little.
Sure.
Yep. And we'll talk about the where and the what.
Okay, well, then in that case, I am good to pass to the next director for now.
Thank you, Director Rivera Smith.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, everybody, or afternoon, sorry. So yeah, in looking at this and trying to reconcile places that are more appropriate to cut from, I agree with previous board directors regarding things like the class size increase is, I think, problematic. We already have a lot of teachers who are already taking on additional students and asking to go across the board that way. and asking to go across the board. That way, it to me is, is troublesome. Especially if that's gonna also affect people's decision of whether or not to come back to us next year. I know there's gonna be larger classes. And at the same time, rainy day fund, it would, it's definitely raining. So how about using that? But I, I also acknowledge that you don't want to generally deplete your rainy day fund because then the next rainstorm, you don't have anything. So and again, so I'm looking at these, I'm trying to like move numbers around, think about maybe if we take option B, but instead of 10,000 from school allocations, do 28 from rainy day. So we're not drying it out, but using more of it. And I know you said that, that's kind of stuff we can do. These are just four of, a number of options we can talk about. Because, you know, I, I think we do definitely want to protect our classrooms and schools. Especially as we are looking towards somehow doing some changes to their ability to take parent organization money and use that for their needs. So I think we need to protect definitely the school funding to the greatest possibility that we can. I don't think I have anything else to add that other directors didn't already cover. So, uh, thank you.
Okay, and then back to Director Harris.
Thank you. I wanna make sure I understand that the student-teacher ratios that were given to Director Hershey, 17 to 1, for instance, K through 3, and the middle school and high school ratios, I think it's 28 to 1. That doesn't just encompass how many students are in a teacher's classroom, but also encompasses all the PCP, the art and the PE and the certificated teachers. And, and that arithmetic includes these extra folks, correct?
Yes, I believe what you said is accurate. I just wanted to do a check with, with Linda to make sure I didn't misunderstand anything. Linda, would you agree with which, I mean?
The class size is the certificated teachers. And then on top of that is the planning time. So an art, a PE would be on top of that because teachers get their preparatory period. So this is not inclusive of that, if that was the question.
But I guess my point is that in actuality, the student-to-teacher ratio, whether they sign in on teams or whether we're in person, it's not 17 to 1. It's significantly higher because we backfill for the certificated teachers and the PCP folks. Is that correct?
So to achieve the 17 to 1 district-wide ratio, those positions are included in that. But when you talk about the secondary classes of 29 to 1, if the class would significantly higher than 29 to 1, which some of the programs that are for planning might be that way historically, it would be because of a building-based decision of how you align student class needs. So you may have a class that has, you know, 15 students in it and another class that has 35 in it.
Okay, well, I have to say that reductions, the school funding allocations or the weighted staffing standard formulas are a complete non-starter for me, especially while we're delivering online education that we well know is difficult for everyone, for families, for the students, for the teachers. That is the last place I want to see us cutting. And with respect to keeping a great deal of money in the rainy day fund, I, I find it problematic because then when we go to Olympia and beg for dollars and set for his house cushions, they'll say, yeah, but you've got, you know, X number of millions of dollars in your rainy day fund. Why didn't you spend it? You don't need our help. That's counterintuitive to me. And again, it's not just raining, it is pouring. And how appropriate that we're in the middle of a rainstorm and a windstorm right now as we speak. So hands off the school funding allocations. And frankly, the rolling it over every year to me is very problematic because I do believe in my heart that there are certain schools that game this system. And, and I hope we have more transparency on that. And we coach our principals, large and in charge, that that harms other schools. And that's an equity issue. And it's one we need to recognize and embrace. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Harris. Okay, I think, did, Director Dolf, did you ask any questions of your own or?
I, I didn't, but I don't wanna, I don't want to spend too much time because I know we've
Yeah, we need to get
near half hour. But the only thing, the only thing I wanted to clarify was that I want to do as much possible that does not impact students directly. So I'm actually more interested in looking at something like economic stabilization as a way to, to identify most of the dollars because I think in agreement with Director Rankin and Harris, I would, I would rather us use what we have now and, and to do whatever we can possible to not further harm or, or affect our students and teachers. So, thank you.
Okay, we can go ahead, Chief Bergy. Back to you.
Great, thank you.
Linda, you have the next slide?
That's Director Hampson's input, please. That matters to me.
Oh, yeah, I don't, I mean, sorry, you can go back one more. Sorry, Leah. I, I, I definitely, I think ultimately, I probably fall in, in the most ideal scenario, somewhere between option A and option B in terms of, only because I, if we were able to create some more efficiency in terms of how our special education funding is, is allocated, I think we would do a lot more with a lot less. But I don't know that that will really be something that, that is on the table for this next year. So in that case, I would be, I would be looking to something more akin to, to option A. You know, I, I think that there's potentially some, some things, some other things that, that might be impacted, but I, I agree that it's not, it's not our focal point. So, yeah, I, I think by and large, we're on the same page.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, go ahead.
Director Hampson?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Was that you raising your hand?
Yes, do you mind?
No, not at all. I just couldn't see. It says, it's, you're, you're in the plus 20 category for me right now for some reason. So, yeah, go ahead. Director Mack?
You can hear me okay?
Now I can.
Sorry, hold on a second. I have got a feedback loop going on.
I'll mute.
I fixed it, I apologize. My question actually is about what you just mentioned around special ed funding. Do we have a deep dive in this presentation around special ed costs, including litigation, et cetera, to talk about, or will we have an opportunity to hear about that at some other time?
So we do have a slide about instructional assistance that we were specifically asked about. And part of the work session really is what else, what other information is the board interested in having at the next work session?
Okay, great. And I think that is actually one of my other questions around the deep dive and those costs. I think it's, it might be helpful to daylight some of that information if we want to talk about cutting. Thanks, that's all. Happy to move on.
Okay, thanks, Director Mack. Go ahead, Chief Bergy. All right, next slide.
As our participatory budgeting activities, we've been moving forward on gathering agreement from the board about the three areas of focus, which are highlighted in green here. The curriculum related to ethnic studies, Black and American Indian studies, the school and continuous improvement area for restorative justice, and the dual language programs. So those were the finalists of what we're bringing forward to the community from the initial list. Next slide. So we had in the last budget work session identified five different groups of stakeholders and community groups that we believed, and the board provided input on, had significant input and connections with the community in those areas. We sent out some notices earlier, early last week, looking for interest to participate in meetings that we were going to be setting up. The participation that people have been sending in has been a little less than we originally anticipated. So we originally scheduled to have five initial meetings with the same group, one for each group, and then five meetings of follow-up. And we've collapsed that into, we now have two meetings. One, the first meeting with the community group is tomorrow afternoon from 2:00 to 4:00 o'clock. And then we have a second meeting next Monday, the 23rd, also from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. And each of the meetings has about four or five participants from the groups that were identified. I believe today, if it hasn't already been sent out, was a survey, a pre-questionnaire so that we can identify a little bit more about the people who are offering to come and have conversations with us. So their backgrounds, their levels of interest. So it can help us if there's a desire to focus more intensely on one of the three areas that were brought forward than maybe on the other areas. Because we want to be respectful of the interests of the community. So that, that is going out. Again, that's a survey. And we are also sending out one-page briefing papers that will help the community, a level setting of what we currently are doing in those areas and some of what the district believes might be future opportunities. Not wanting to prejudice the answers from the community, but just trying to help people understand when there, sometimes it's not a complete understanding of what we're doing. So that's the status of where we are right now on participatory budgeting.
Director Hampson?
Yes.
Could those documents be sent out to all board members, please, so that we can stay tightly looped?
Yes, we were planning on sending out the one-page documents. We can send out the questionnaire. You can click on the link. Just don't submit your questionnaire.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay, so if anybody has a question here, how about you just raise your hand? As, I want to make sure that we have enough time. So I see one hand raised. Go ahead. I can't see who it is right now.
I think it's me, Director Vera Smith.
Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Linda, can you say what, what, what organizations or groups did you get responses for participation from?
We can send out a, a list of, to everybody so that you can see. I, I would encourage all board members, if, if you know folks from, I, I will say, having talked to some organizations, there, there's a lot going on right now. People are being tapped for a lot of different things, both within the school district and, and with other agencies and organizations. And so, and, and I think it's in general, it's a pretty tough time we're heading into. So if, if you're able to make a supporting call to say, hey, if you, if you can send somebody, it would be beneficial. But we also need to understand where people are, are right now. But yeah, I think we can send out that, that list of orgs and their, their contacts. We, Leah worked with both Directors Hershey and myself and also with James Bush to, to make sure we were connecting with the right, the right folks. And I was still making some calls today to get people to put their names in. So hopefully, as the, the meetings come up, we'll, we'll get more participation. Anybody else on this particular section, or should we go ahead and move on? Okay, Chief Bergy? All right, next slide, please. So on slide 11, you'll see, these are the, this is a list of areas for review that we were provided by board directors as wanting some more information on. So for today's work session, you can see that we've provided some high-level information to start the conversation. What we expect is that there might be additional questions from board directors or it may answer some questions that you currently have. So next slide, please. And the chiefs over each area, I'll do the strat plan slide, but then the chiefs over each area will actually go over their own slide and I'll facilitate that. So the strategic plan overview for 2021, to give you an idea, there is about 35.8 FTEs or about 50% of the money is in salaries and benefits for the strategic plan across all of the goals. So this is across all goals. And then we have PD in the second line, which really covers workshops, subs, extra time. Supplies are the third line. And then contracts would be the $1.7 million for 16%. Next slide, please. This is the list of positions that we currently have funded under the strat plan. Sorry, I'm having a coughing fit. Linda, you're gonna have to take it over until I stop.
Not a problem. So this 38, 35.8 FTE aligns with the previous slide. This is just a more broken down version of it. These are the positions. And we have multiple fund sources that are running through the strategic plan right now. So what you're seeing is the positions that are funded on the general fund, the learning assistance program, Title I, Title IV, and the African-American male academy grant. So I don't know if there's any specific, specific questions about this or any of the positions?
Right, I'll, I'm back. So I'll just provide some other context. Under the ninth grade goal and some of the secondary goals, this first line, the attendance intervention success coordinators, these are the case managers that we had talked about funding. So that might not be intuitive. We have to pick a job title and it doesn't necessarily always match up to the common title that we've referred to it as part of the strategic plan. We have hired some more support for school and family partnerships, some customer support and comms for Carrie's division, Carrie Campbell's division, additional directors of schools. We have some more family support workers. These are the coaches, the instructional coaches for the third grade goal. These are the managers that are in the African-American male achievement department that was created. Then this position is the customer service helpline that we had in the strategic plan. And these are some of those other supports to help warm and welcoming environment and, and goal one, I believe. And I'm going to move on and then we can come back to this if you have additional questions. So up next, Consey, Chief Pedroza?
Thank you, Chief Bergy. Hello, everybody. So I just wanted to just share an update regarding the expenditures for highly capable. I just wanted to share some points that state law requires, that highly capable revenue must be spent on highly capable activity. A majority of the budget is allocated to staffing with close to 11 FTE. The functions of the department are both compliance for identification purposes as well as instructional support. well as instructional supports and coaching for schools, specifically our pathway schools. And then funds not allocated for staffing is needed to support focusing on our work for increasing the opportunities for students for this from educational justice. This includes identification, coaching school teams on anti-bias practices, training, and neighborhood pilot development. So those are the pieces that we're developing right now through some of the recommendations. And so that's where we're focusing any non-staffing expenditures.
And I have one error in the blue box. Would I include that? That should say for 2021. That's our projected revenue for school year 2021. So next slide is Dr. Chief Becker.
Yes, you don't need my camera. Yes, this is our budget slide that shows everything that's going on. It will look familiar to many of the board members, because they were, anything that's in the ongoing commitments, those were ones that were board-approved curriculum. So in 2018, you approved six through eight math. And so you can see that that will run out in this coming year. Our K through five English Language Arts, you commonly know that as CCC. Again, that was adopted, we're in our third year of that, so you can see that that will be running out soon. Science was just last year. A big portion of that money, if you see some of the balance there, keep in mind that much of, or a lot of, the cost of the K through eight, or the K through 12 science was around PD. And with not being able to do PD in the traditional manner, since we've been in remote learning, we've had quite a bit of savings there. The Since Time and Memorial budget is the same as it's been, that is allocated from here. There's also other funding that comes into Since Time and Memorial in terms of grants and other revenue streams. Ethnic Studies is one that, if you look, it does have a $500,000 budget, and it's had that budget for the past couple of years. And so you can see what's happened there. In the remote learning support, you'll remember that we came to you asking to do an English Language Arts pilot in six through eight. Because of the age of that curriculum, we had not as many people or not as many schools and teachers take us up on that. So we won't be spending that entire $150,000, but we've reallocated that to other areas that remote learning has required. We had a six through eight math upgrade. As you recall, we had just done an adoption a few years ago, but we did not buy the digital material, so that's what that cost is for. And then a new one that we have funded that we weren't anticipating, it wasn't on our budget before remote learning, is a program called Music First. And this allows our instrumental programs, our band programs, to be able to do music. We are in the process. We have purchased that, but we haven't yet gotten that deployed to schools due to the rostering of students. We're in the middle of working on that. We do have a not committed amount there. It's a significant amount of money that we're pleased to have, especially knowing that if we have to stay in remote, you know, during all of this year, that we may have more digital materials that we need to provide. We, we're done with world language and Spanish. We did fund more of that out of some extra funding to get digital resources for that. We have our arts programs. Those are, I think you heard somebody talk about art kits, or we have, we have deployed art kits to most schools. And then, of course, you'll see some carryforward there. In the math, it has to do, we, our math program manager left last year at mid-year, and so we had some underspend there, and our carryforward in science as well. So that's it for teaching and learning.
Thank you. Chief Podesta.
Hello, good afternoon. Briefly go through the Safety and Security Department budget. As you can see, it's virtually all, the entire budget is virtually all for staffing. There are two management positions, the manager and assistant manager that manage the department, which we need coverage, given it's a seven-by-24 operation. There is an operations scheduling type position in the central office, which is a communication specialist. And there's an emergency planning position, which works with all schools on their emergency site plans, and helps us with emergency and disaster response planning in the central office across the district. The remaining positions all work in the field or the alarm office. Security specialists are assigned to secondary schools during school hours. And the staffing in each school varies depending on the enrollment at the school. Tactical specialists work in regions and respond, either at elementary schools, which don't have regular staffing or other sites as needed. The response specialists patrol the whole district outside of school hours, so weekends and evenings, they cover rotating shifts to respond to access alarms or any other issues that happen at schools. Our, the Safety and Security Office is posted at every school building, and they get lots of after-hours calls for a variety of issues. And I believe Chief Jesse has the next slide.
Good afternoon. Why Jesse? Chief of Schools and Continuous Improvement. So for this budget, like what Chief Podesta was presenting, it's almost all in staffing and benefits. The, I have their, the oversight of the schools, all 104, so the Director of Schools, as well as the support mechanisms across teaching and learning, now with their Director of Schools, instead of the highest ratio, I'm sure, within the Puget Sound area for supervision of principals, where we're having up to 25 schools for a director. Now we are down into the higher teens, so that level oversight, plus the coordination of the cross-departmental teams, the learning support teams that we have out at sites, that we align our work to the CSIPS, that we hold them very well and important to getting outcomes for our students and families. Then I do also operations. We have an operations team that coordinates a lot with Fred's team, a Director's Student Supports, which supports and coordinates with both curriculum and instruction, as well as student supports. Everyone's work does eventually funnel down to the school, so that's why we have those two important folks who can speak their language and translate it to ensure that things are getting carried through throughout the district. I have a project manager for continuous improvement, so as we look to utilizing data to see where we can make improvements in our processes. And then rounding out for student support services, having folks do, we have consultants who are part of LAPD dollars, so those are coaches, really, it says consultants, but they're coaches or TOSSs. So they're SEA-represented teachers that go out in the school sites to work specifically for students identified under LAPD dollars across the district, all 104 schools. Two principal coaches that are within the past contract, so those are those human resources consulting principals. And then administration to support the whole team, so we have four administrators who support that, and all 104 schools when they have questions. So that is on this particular budget, I think, believe, going back to Consey, or Chief Pedrosa, so I will end that over there.
Consey to you, why. Okay, everyone, hi. I just want to just reiterate, this is the special education information regarding instructional assistance. And I know that's a big topic, so I want to make sure that I give some clarity around how we utilize and have our expenditures for instructional assistance. So if you'll notice on the slide in front of you, that instructional assistance, we have it divided up by allocations to schools, the school funding model, as well as how the central office staffing for instructional assistance. And then the ones that are allocated to schools per the service model. And of course, I just also want to mention very closely the collective bargaining agreement also outlines how we staff IAs specifically for some of our service pathway programs, including the bridges and in tandem programs. Additional instructional assistants are allocated through the IEP process, utilizing a one-to-one support model and services. And I would, we would love to collaborate. I know the conversation came up in a previous session regarding how to think differently about utilizing instructional assistance. And we would love to collaborate on supporting our goals around inclusionary practices, specifically targeting our non-special education dollars, how we could use that to be more flexible to support student learning. And I just wanted to remind the school board that the opener for special education with our union partners is coming up this spring in 2021.
Thank you, Consey. Just to give some context again, go back one slide, yeah. On your FlexView document, you can see that the $61 million that we're spending is about half of our special education budget, or close to it, in total. Next slide, please. So a little bit more information about our reserves. So our current balance is $38.7 million. We do have a board policy that says that we will have somewhere between 3% and 5%, unless the board decides otherwise, which they can decide otherwise, they just, you have to come out, and there needs to be, I think, a board statement about that, to go below it, below the 3%. So just for some context, every 1% reduction is worth about approximately $9.7 million. If we choose to spend most of our fund balance, part of what I just want to make you aware of, not, again, not that it cannot be a choice that we make, we would likely get some type of an audit finding about putting ourselves in a financial position of great risk. So just to let you know, the Auditor's Office does look at that every year, as does OSPI. But it is, you know, a rainy day fund is for when it's pouring, and it's pouring.
I'm sorry, Chief Bergy, can you repeat that, please?
The pouring part is about the audit.
About the audit, what you said, I just missed the beginning part, and then, so the next part.
So if we, if we go below 3% or so, we, so let's say we ended up at 1% or 0% of our rainy day fund being left, we would likely get an audit finding from the state Auditor's Office. It's something that they've been doing the last few years, when districts get into a risky financial position, in their opinion.
I see, thank you.
Yep. Next slide, please. So the transfer from the capital fund, so this is language where we specifically, the legislature made changes to language. Right now, there's an RCW that outlines some maintenance that does qualify for capital funds to pay for. And they basically broaden that to say, anything that's maintenance at all, regular people who work in maintenance, any sort of work done by maintenance, you can use a capital dollar to fund. And through the 2021 school year. So we would have to ask for and get this authority again. We have gotten it once, it's typically a little bit easier to get the second time, but it's not, you know, a done deal. So the dollars that are available in the capital fund, there is some uncommitted fund balances from each of the previous BTA and BEX levies, and those are all, where the projects are all done and completed. So those are additional dollars that were remaining. And then we have the capital eligible program, or CEP, that has about $3.6 million available today currently. And that does not include the community schools fund balance, so there's an additional $16.7 million from surplus property sales that are not included in the $7.2 million. Some other ways that we believe that this amount would increase is there's $9.8 million in bond payments that are right now being set aside to be paid for. But that has been slated to be included in BTA V, so paying for that last $9.8 million. If that's approved as part of the BTA V levy, we would free up another $9.8 million that's potentially available. And then our major preventative maintenance dollars, so we do have a large pot of money available that we use on major preventative maintenance, and we do have a balance of about $37 million across BTA IV that has not all been spent, and BEX V as well. Next slide, please. Well, actually, Slide 20, we'll go back. So we're at the outcomes portion. That concludes the prepared remarks and slides that we had. So Director Hampson, back to you for questions.
Thank you. So let's try, starting with Director Vera Smith, to go ahead and cover your questions on each of those particular areas. Direct your questions to the specific chief that presented, and then hopefully, as we go through the list, some questions will naturally be, that others have, will naturally be answered. So do you want us to start at the beginning slide, Director Vera Smith, for this section?
This one's fine.
Okay.
So I guess I'll ask first of all, so I'm looking at this, and I'm wondering if I could find out what Chief Podesta has, if he has any comments about the capital funds, possible transfers there.
Well, certainly, we have ample funding in the capital program. Of course, we have a surplus of needs as well. So given the circumstances that we're in, I think it's a viable option. It will defer investments, not remove them. You know, all these capital dollars and the expenses to, you know, our buildings don't get newer. And so it'll come home to roost eventually, but I think there's some flexibility we have now. We're always going back to the voters for additional funds, and our needs always outstrip those. But I, you know, I believe we can phase our work in such a way that there are some viable options here for the board.
Thank you for that. And I think that, I was thinking about that on the long, same lines for academics, the idea that this doesn't remove the need, it's not like the one year goes away and we don't need it anymore. These are just, it kind of just puts off, puts off things that do need to get eventually paid for and projects done. So thank you for that comment there. I will go back to then, I think it was Chief, Consey? Yeah. Chief Pedrosa, sorry. When you were talking about, you said there's an opener for special ed coming up in the spring. Can you tell us more about that and what that, what potential is there?
And I'll actually have Clover also available to respond, if she's available, but this spring. So when we did the bargaining agreement, I believe it was last year, because I was on the bargaining team at CEAL, feels like a lifetime ago, there was, I left some openers that, there were some things that we had to continue to refine. Special education and some of the staffing and components were part of that reopeners. So that's coming up this spring. Clover might have the more accurate deadline, timelines, but that is coming up. So sometimes that happens when we do a bargain, that there are some things that the team wants to collaborate and work on together. That's part of the work that the Special Education Task Force started before COVID, to have come together with some interest-based agreements about what we want to see in the bargaining moving forward.
This is Clover Cod. I just want to reiterate what Consey said. She's absolutely right. We do have a reopeners for special education this spring, and there is a collaborative group, SCA, SPS, that have been working together actually for quite some time to kind of rethink how we might deliver sped services that are in support of our students. And so we will have bargaining this spring, summer around special education.
Thank you. And so how it affects budgeting is we're looking at probably additional costs. Thank you. And so how it affects budgeting is we're looking at probably additional costs in that or how is that part of this budgeting conversation?
Having sat through bargaining in the past, there was always data, usually typically. Chief Burgi, Chief Cod and other members of the staff are part of that process. So we'll be looking at budget numbers, data numbers. We'll be looking at students requiring IEP services in terms of enrollment, all of those pieces. That's all part of the equation. And we also have to be mindful about. We also don't bargain just an unlimited amount of money. We also have to be within the budget. So sometimes it might mean reprioritizing some things. Through the summer. So if there's some things that we really feel is needed. Especially, especially when we think about recovery or compulsory services or any of those pieces. That'll also be coming to the table to discuss what is needed for the remainder of the bargaining agreement.
Thank you. No more questions.
Okay, Director Rankin. And just to, sorry, we have 20 minutes left in this session. And six board members to get through, so just do the math and be conscientious about your time use. Thank you.
Can I, can I please go to the teaching and learning slide? Thank you. So for Spanish. Catching me up, but let me make sure I'm caught up to where we're at. I, I know that we made some, some changes to, to get some more resources for this year, but is this inclusive of a longer term? Plan to fund those different curriculum, curricular supports? Into the future or just for this year?
Director Rankin, this is Diane Debacker, and it was just for this year. For, for most of those resources that we got or we received for the digital resources for Spanish. We, we had the option of purchasing one year, two year or six year. And we chose to just go with one year. So if we stay in remote, you know. You know, for another year, we would have to be looking at, at spending more down the road. The good thing about the Spanish adoption is that we had done it so recently, the publisher was really worked with us to, to work it out. So. I'm not saying that we would be able to have that same, same graciousness from them, but. But, but yes, the bulk of that was a one-time expenditure for one year.
Okay, so I'm actually concerned that we don't have any budget for that going forward because my understanding and talking to Spanish. Language educators was that those digital resources were. Something they. Preferred that curriculum, when the curriculum adoption was done before my time on the board, like right before. The, the educators really liked the one that was chosen partly because of the digital resources. So I am just, I guess, want to. State concern that we don't have budget ongoing because even if we were to return to fully in person, it's my understanding that those educators. Still felt strongly that that was a foundational piece of the curriculum that was chosen. So just putting that out there. That. Being remote doesn't necessarily mean, or going back in person doesn't mean that that need will not still be with us. Hopefully that, hopefully that made sense. And then I, I'm also wondering about, I know, you know, K5 math is not on here at all. If there's been any analysis done or how we would look at budgetary impacts of. A full adoption for K5. Versus the very high number of curriculum waivers that buildings. Where buildings are paying out of their own building budget. If there's a. Analysis around. The overall cost and budgetary implications there. If, if there is actually any kind of cost savings overall by having. A full adoption as opposed to the piecemeal waivers. That's just another question that doesn't have to be answered right this second. And then in. The special educate, can we go to the special education slide and then I'll, and then I'll be done? Thank you. I just, again, and I know this came up before, so I just want to clarify for, for folks that. Right now, the, the, the way that we provide special education in Seattle Public Schools. Is very expensive and very staff-driven instead of student-driven. So I, I don't want, I know that people see this and are alarmed because. It, it looks like the proposal is a reduction of services, but actually what. At least I really would like us to consider is. Is how our current model is actually by design exclusionary. It removes students from a general education setting. And it's adult-driven. And I would like us to, for many reasons. But one of which I believe is a cost savings, but mostly because it's what's better for students. To shift, see how we can shift towards being student need-driven in our staffing and our expenses. As opposed to right now, staff, we kind of start with staffing and then fill in the students. So I'm just wanting to kind of. Summarize that really quickly for my, for my fellow board directors, what this is and what the discussion is. And I think that's it for me for now.
Director Mack?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Apologies, I just, I've had some tech difficulties today. Okay, appreciate having this special ed slide up. And the conversation there. About whether or not the dollars are actually being used in service of students and whether or not the model needs to change. I, I have some big concerns about making sweeping. Changes to the model without doing. A deeper dive and investigation into. Historically what has happened. And that to include the number of incidences where we have. Students that end up having to take the case to mitigation. And then all the costliness of the legal battle with the family. And then where the district actually loses and is required to provide. An additional above and beyond something outside of our district as opposed to having provided the service in our district. I think that in order to evaluate. Our model, we need to take a good look at matching. Student needs. To. Whether or not they're being served appropriately and whether or not the staffing actually matches that. Because I hear the, the reverse. Is what Director Rankin, I think, is trying to say is that that's, we kind of have a reverse thought process. And I would agree with that assessment that. I have concerns that kind of systemically, when we look at special education. We are not starting first with. What in fact are the students' needs and how do we ensure that they get those services? But it's, it's a reverse process of. You know, identifying staffing and then trying to plug the students into that. And. So I, I do think that that dive needs to be taken in a more comprehensive manner. And I would appreciate from a budgeting standpoint. That we daylight the information about. How much we're spending on litigating and how much we're having to spend on outside services because we're not providing them. Internally. And that should be part of the conversation if we're going to talk about trying to. Change the model or reduce the dollars because I don't think we have the full picture here. So that's my request for that part of this conversation on special education. Can we flip over to, I think it might be the last slide about the capital dollars? Thank you. First, I'll say that. To the extent that there are dollars available in the capital funds that haven't been allocated from the previous levies, et cetera. That. In our current situation. If we can use some of those towards service of students in maintenance of our buildings, et cetera, the things that are actually really critical. To be done. I, I support that. And I think there's probably opportunity to. Do that if we can get the legislator, legislature to agree to that again. However, I have a detailed question that has me a little confused and that's the second bullet saying that CEP. Balance. With the community schools balance is 16.7 million. And. My most recent operations committee report on the fund balances by program has. That line item is 3.6. So I'm wondering where there's. Is that a typo or is the community schools fund not been updated monthly in our capital budget updates?
Director Mack, that, the 3.6 is listed right above the 7.2 million in the list. So that is, those are the dollars without the community schools fund balance in it. So there's $3.6 million. And then in addition, in the CEP bucket, there's this. $16.7 million from surplus property sales that is earmarked for community schools. So it's 3.6 plus 16.7.
I understand, but then there's a glitch in the reporting to Ops because that line item. On our, and I'm looking at it right here because I got a little confused and I went, that doesn't make sense to me. It says CEP slash CS. It's supposed to include those dollars. So these dollars are brand new to me. So I'm kind of, and I've been on the board and I've been chairing Ops for three years now. So hearing that there's $16 million. Dollars from surplus property sales that I haven't seen reported. For a long time, I'm kind of, I'm really confused. So maybe just be helpful to follow up on. Where that's been reported before or why that's not been. Because that, I, I was not aware of $16.7 million.
Okay, I'll ask Melissa to report out and clarify though.
And the total program, the total program. From the last report out is 7, 7.2 of, from BTA, all the BTA BEXs that have closed out. Is 7.2.
Yep, that's the top numbers, yep. I just want to say too that we have the ability to make this move in this school year while we have the authority. So the authority's been granted for the 2021 school year. So we would make that shift this year and it would free up resources to carry forward to help in 21, 22. That would be an option for us. So it's not, we don't need to get more legislative authority. We can use what we currently have now. And set us up to really have additional money to be used for 21, 22 to fill that gap.
Okay, yeah, to the extent that I do not support spending capital. General fund. This case, it's the same thing, dollars that have been existing in our capital fund, but they're. Sitting there doing nothing and we do have a need in our general fund. So I do, I, I, I am in support of that strategy. With the, you know, kind of limitations that we're not intentionally selling off property in order to. Close the capital budget or close the general fund budget. Thanks.
Okay, Director Mack, I need to move on. Thank you to Director Harris.
I thought it was Director Hersi.
I'm sorry, Director Hersi.
It's all good, no worries. Can we go back to the curriculum? Yeah, mine is going to be super quick since I took a lot of time earlier. If we could just move back to that curriculum side real quick, that would be much appreciated. Thank you. So the only thing that I wanted to echo was the K5 piece for math that Director Rankin brought up. I do also just really quickly have a question and forgive me if I didn't hear this in the presentation. I'm looking at $2,300 for. The 6-8 English Language Arts pilot. I'm wondering, is that a typical amount that we would spend on a curriculum adoption of that scale?
Yes, this is Diane Debacker, Director Hersi, and it's, the, the title's a little misleading there. The 2.3 million was set aside for the 6 through 8 English Language Arts adoption. And when we didn't do that, so, so that wouldn't be for pilot, that would be for an adoption. And that is a pretty typical amount for that grade level. And so I'm thinking back to Director Rankin's thoughts and your mention of the K through 5. When we had looked at trying to get, trying to do a pilot for K through 5 with a digital this year for the remote. We were looking at about 1.5 million, so.
Okay, that's all I've got for right now. Thank you for that clarification.
Welcome.
Okay, thank you, Director Harris.
Okay, first question up is, and I've got several. Director of School, I guess this would be to Yad Jesse and Jolynn Burgi. On slide 13, under scrap plan, we've got Directors of School for $617,000. And on slide 17, we have Directors of School for $1.37 million. Are we double counting here? What's the distinction and difference, please?
Yeah, hi, Director Harris. So there's, it's kind of like a transition here. For total, we have eight Directors of Schools. The one thing that's off a little bit in that is that we did eliminate a position. To help fund the Directors of Schools. Director, I mean, Chief Burgi, do you want to add anything?
That's clear as mud to me, Chief Jesse. Could you explain further? How many positions, et cetera, et cetera?
So there are eight total funded Directors of Schools. Previously, it was. Five. And then part of the funding mechanism for these came from a elimination of a position literally this fiscal year. To help fund the positions. So we started with five. And then we're able to add the three new positions for us this, this, this year.
Eight position doesn't help me. Which position and why are they? Listed in two different budget categories? I'm confused, obviously.
Director Harris, they're just listed by, so part of them, part of the increase, the two and a half were funded as part of the strategic plan dollars and the strategy for needing more Directors of Schools to support those activities. And the other 5.5 are just funded out of baseline and are considered part of that budget. So in totality, there's eight. Two and a half are funded out of the scrap plan dollars, five and a half are funded out of baseline in YS budget. And he used one position, he repurposed one position this year to fund part of that increase in this slide. And I don't remember what the position was. Wyatt, do you?
Yeah, it's, it's related to principal professional development.
Okay, I'm, I'm concerned that this is not transparent and that it's in two different budgets. And when I see scrap plan, I think third grade reading, ninth grade math, not Directors of Schools. In, in order to, and I, believe me, I am in favor of lessening the ratios. For directors supervising principals in a huge way and for the multidisciplinary team. But this is not transparent to me. Next question would be to Dr. Debacker. Have we sent out Dr. Konosha's. Curriculum adoption. Um, have we sent out Dr. Kenosha's, um, curriculum adoption uh, page that has all the different colors and shows us which curriculum adoptions are thirty years behind, twenty-five years behind, fifteen years behind, so that we actually have the foundation of history and knowledge in which to, uh, compare slide fifteen to?
Yeah, thank you, Director Harris. Um, I don't believe we've sent it out lately. We can certainly send it out again.
I, I certainly would appreciate that because you know what they say about history and condemnation to, to repeat it. And again, curriculum has been the first to be cut historically in this district and that's how we got to twenty-five and thirty years behind. Uh, ethnic study concerns me greatly. Again, we're thirty, we're three years behind on a board number one priority. As far as I know, we haven't listed the three instructional assistants and we still have the manager position open. Is that correct?
Uh, that is correct. I, I can answer for this and I don't know if, uh, Dr. Scarlett is, um, available to answer, but, um, the five hundred thousand dollars that you see there for the budget is for curriculum development, for professional development to assist with developing curriculum units, um, to hold institutes, um, and other events. That does not include staffing, but staffing is available for program manager and to supporting staff.
And have we listed the manager position and the, the two supporting staff positions? Yeah.
The, um, manager position, program manager for ethnic studies, we, um, concluded about as much, um, engagement with NAACP and some other groups, um, um, the ethnic studies advisory group members. And so that position has been posted today. It should post this evening for the program manager. We have not posted the, um, curriculum, um, positions, um, yet. We're still working, um, with our, um, community partners in order to, um, work on the job descriptions, but those will be, um, posted shortly thereafter.
Thank you for that and welcome, Dr. Scarlett. I, I hate to sound like a broken record, but we are so far behind on fixing this. I, I am troubled. Next question would be to, uh, Chief Podesta. On slide sixteen, with respect to security, I see nothing in there with respect to professional development and the lack thereof has cost us greatly. Is there a line item for professional development?
Um, I, we capture those, I believe, in, in contracts and supplies and services.
Can you, uh, break that down and send that out in a Friday memo because I know it's a great deal of concern to my colleagues and myself?
Certainly.
Thank you. And if we could put that in a minute, I'd be grateful. Uh, my next question is to Chief Narver. Is he on the phone?
I am, yes.
Super. Uh, to follow up and, and enhance Director, um, Mack's concern, do we have litigation costs and compensatory services broken out for where we have, uh, not met the mark for special education? And if not, can?
I'm sorry. Um, yes, I've been, I was taking notes as Director Mack was speaking that that's information we can, I don't have it, um, offhand tonight, but, uh, it's information we can break out and make available.
And is there a way we can figure out via risk management and having more realistic budgets for special ed until we can fix some of these problems and, and set aside money for that?
Uh, let, let me begin by getting the dollar figures to you and, and see what we can talk about then.
Okay, my last point would be to, uh, Chief Bergy and Chief Podesta. I, I understand that we have balances from Vex and BTA, but the concept of switching capital funds into general funds, I think could deal us a serious trust blow when we go out for more levy funding. Why should we give you all this money if in four or five years, you're just going to switch it over to the capital fund? And, and I have concerns about that transparency, uh, from those issues. And it's not like we don't have a great many capital needs to spend those funds on, including, I might add, Memorial Stadium that, that we spoke about last evening and our three by two. So how, how do we address the transparency or the shell game or bait and switch complaints we hear from our constituents?
So Director Harris, I would just say that the legislature makes changes to definitions, um, at times and maintenance is allowed now. Uh, major preventative maintenance dollars, maintenance dollars are allowed as a line item out of the capital fund now. So that definition currently exists and we set aside dollars for that. This expands that somewhat. Uh, and I will pause there and see if Fred has anything to add.
I, I think also, you know, as we've, we prioritize places with levies that have been completed and we've delivered to the voters, everything that was promised as part of the levy is, as a place to start. Um, and that, uh, we focus any, um, reprogrammed dollars on things that still, um, preserve capital assets like major maintenance and things like that. Uh, you know, I, I think we will have kept our trust, um, with our stakeholders.
But wouldn't it make sense to keep going down the extraordinary list of capital needs as opposed to switching it to the capital fund? The general fund, excuse me?
I mean, there, there's certainly an argument for that. I, these, all these in, uh, you know, it's, it's a matter of priorities and balancing a lot of needs that the, that the district has and being thoughtful about, are there places where we can defer something? As I said before, there, there's no escaping these eventually. It's just if we're in a crisis, in a short-term crisis, can we be flexible?
Thank you. I'll pass to the next director. Thank you.
Director Hampson, back to you.
Oh, I'm sorry, talking on mute, Director Duol. President Duol.
This is, hey, thank you. This has been a thorough, thorough conversation. So I don't have any more, many more questions than have already been asked and elevated, but my one curiosity is around strategic plan. And my curiosity is just around, um, given we are in a global pandemic, um, nothing to me seems more strategic than making sure that we are doing the most basic functions of what we're supposed to provide as a district. And so I'm just curious about, you know, is it, is it unprecedented to pause a strategic plan, um, kind of in times of crisis like this?
Did you want Chief Bergy to respond to that or?
I, I, this superintendent, you know, I mean, I guess, you know, the work that we're doing, even in a remote setting, in a pandemic, it all, I mean, the decisions and the conversations that we're having, I think, are still centered on the strategic plan and making sure that we are centering, um, African-American, black boys and teens in all that we do, that we are focused on third grade reading. I mean, I just think that we are still doing the work of the strategic plan even in the middle of this. And in fact, it's probably even more important than if we were in broken order at this point in time.
I don't have any more questions, Director Hampson. Thank you.
Okay, um, well, I'll, I'll actually kind of follow up on that because I, um, well, I, uh, would say, my, my belief would be that no, we can't pause their strategic plan. My, um, feeling and, and thank you to, um, Chief Bergy and, uh, Director Sebring for, for bringing forward, um, all this good information allowing us to have this, uh, conversation. Uh, it's, it's, it's been a good one and I, um, get the, the general sense, um, from this rather than going into specifics of mine that, that we have a tendency historically and even in these, the, the current, um, budgets shown here in the areas that we were looking a little bit more deeply into, to fund people when we need to be funding systems. And, um, so whereas we of course need to, to, um, I believe, continue with our strategic plan, I don't believe that, I think we can take a look at each one of these things and, and see where are there, um, systemic approaches over time that, that we can fund versus, um, funding humans. And be, and I, I think we tend to do that because we are in a service, um, model of, um, you know, uh, where humans are in fact our primary, um, expense, uh, the vast majority of our expenses. Um, however, at the level of central office, for example, um, which is where many of these things are, we, we are looking at, um, things that, that should be funded more systemically. Um, and with that, I guess, I would say, um, I would ask for, I'll, I'll start with, um, Chief Jesse, what, what you, if you have any things that you think, um, could be, could be cut from, from the, um, the budget that you presented? And would ask the same of, um, uh, Chief, uh, Pedrosa and, um, Chief Podesta as well.
Well, since my budget is, uh, as you can see underneath that is almost all, it's all staff, there's really, I would have to cut staff members. Um, obviously in this conversation, I don't, I'm not really comfortable talking about exactly which position, but I, I could see myself just representative of, of previous cuts into budgets. You know, I'd go through, um, the process and, and, you know, identify whatever amount of, you know, money I had to cut in that. And, you know, that usually yields to, um, in a budget like this would be a couple of positions. I, I hope that's helpful. Is there anything to follow up to that?
Um, well, I guess, and I guess, I'm, I'm kind of looking or asking for, for everyone to think about it from a systemic, you know, viewpoint. Like what are the, the particular systems or, or, um, lack of systems that are, that are being, you know, supported or not? Um, so, I mean, that's fine for now because we're, we're already over time. Um, so I, but, and we can, we, we will have to continue this discussion, but that's just where, where my head is. Um, and so Chief, um, Pedrosa, do you want to respond at all?
Yeah, no, I was going to get ready to respond next. I feel like, for example, just in terms of special education, and I'll just speak about that right now. I really want to be cautious about what, any cuts, um, overall to any. I do want to think through what we need to do to, um, think through our programming. We have to think about the collective bargaining agreement. Right now, there's a lot of staffing that's, um, that's determined through that process. And so I want to make sure that we have a robust process that includes our, um, our, our partners all around the system. But also we have to be thoughtful about, right now, um, it's going to be a looming in terms of recovery and compensatory education for some of our students, many of our students actually. And so those are going to be more costs. So I, I am a little nervous about talking about cuts, uh, to special education budget right now. We can look, I think we can look at reallocations and we can look at reshifting some things. Um, but cuts right now, when we're looking at, um, the, the, um, the impacts of, of a pandemic, especially for our students, uh, for this from educational justice, our students of color and receiving 504 and special education services is, is something we have to talk about thoughtfully in consideration. Regarding highly capable services, you saw most of the staffing was related to, um, staffing right now. Um, we have a process in place i- in our, um, policies around identification and services. And so, um, we would have to have that conversation if there would be any shifting or reallocation of those funds as well.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't tell from that whether, what the district is, what we pay over and above. Leah, can you go to the highly capable one? What we pay over and above what we get from the state?
Nothing.
Okay, that, that's what I thought I was getting from that, but I couldn't, this is, the, the positions versus the, that's just minus the supplies, postage, conference, travel contracts, right?
And there, and there is more flexibility. I mean, and so that's part of the work we're trying to do is think about, um, the way we've defined, um, highly capable services. There is flexibility in how we can allocate those funding and services. And I think that's the conversation we need to have.
Okay, okay, that's helpful. Um, and then, uh, ironically, actually, uh, Chief Podesta, you're the only one, you've already talked about cuts in, in a major way and that, that's on the, the block. So, um, I guess, you know, this, these are times when we have to be really brave. I don't know if you have anything to add. Obviously, we've looked at a huge cut to the, um, to capital. That's not necessarily operations. But do you have anything else you'd want to add?
We are, um, looking in transportation, actually, um, uh, and how we, which hasn't been an area identified here, but how we build routes is an area that we're looking for efficiency. Our historical practice has been, um, to build our transportation services based on eligibility and probably less intense analysis of actual ridership, um, to see, to see if we can create some efficiencies. That's a complex process. So how quickly that would yield results, um, uh, we, we have to think about. But that's, uh, one area be, beyond capital that, um, uh, we've been thinking about. With regard to security, it cover, the safety and security department covers many, many sites. And we're opening another building, um, soon. Um, so, uh, stretching that thinner, um, uh, gives me some pause, but we are looking at some of the management functions and the emergency planning functions to see, um, if those can be combined a bit that might create a little bit of savings, but it would really be at the margins.
Thank you so much for that. And then Superintendent Juno or Chief Bergy, do you want to add anything around the strategic plan? Relative to my question?
About cutting?
Uh, yeah, taking a systems level, a systems approach to, um, whether or not we would reduce anything and focus on those things that are, that are, are creating systemic, systemic positive impact.
Yeah, I mean, I think these are kind of like what we can dig into deeper about what's, you know, like, as you say, getting the bang for the buck and think about, um, as Director Duol said, what is necessary right now. I, I do believe that our strategic plan is necessary even in hard times and difficult times, um, to make sure. I mean, that's when it is the most important to focus on. But there are definitely things that I think we can have further conversation about, about, you know, where, because there's a lot to unpack and to, actually into each of those, uh, areas as well. But, you know, we are talking people and programs when we have these conversations, which I know all of you know gets, uh, difficult, but we can have more conversation. I don't have anything at this point to directly point at.
Okay, and then just as a note, um, Chief Bergy, for next time, I think if we can look at, in particular, when the next time we discuss the strategic plan budget, I think it would be really helpful for us to look at many of these areas cross over directly into, um, other departments. And that was, that's something that we kind of talked about even, um, like a year ago. Um, uh, not quite a year ago, uh, almost a year ago, uh, that, that really many of these things are in fact happening within, um, other departments. And so we, to, to look at that overlay, I think would be helpful. Um, so unless, uh, Chief Bergy, did you have anything you wanted to add to wrap up or, um, Director Sebring?
Um, I just wanted to, one of the things that I forgot to mention about the, um, the policy for the economic stabilization, just to remind us all, it does say that if we drop below three percent, we do have a, we do, do need to have a plan to repay that or we would need to amend the policy. And then we do have a December fifth work session, I believe, or a December work session that is also covering the strategic plan. So I'll work with you, Director Hampson, to figure out which we're providing and in what format, what's coming to the work session versus the work session.
And if y'all are thinking of it, you could email me quickly now or text me if you have thoughts for what you want to see next time rather than me talking to you the week before, because I know everybody's completely overwhelmed right now. rather than me talking to you the week before, because I know everybody's completely overwhelmed right now. And by that, I mean, you know, fellow board directors or staff, the stuff that you want to present. Um, shoot me a text or an email right now and, and copy Chief Burgy. Okay, so um, as there is no further business on the agenda and we are already nineteen minutes over, then meet, this meeting stays adjourned at five nineteen PM, Pinagigi. And uh, thanks very much to all of you. Stay dry and healthy.